Yes.
So, good evening, everybody, and welcome. We are thrilled to be back in person. So, happy to start this meeting tonight for the March 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
And Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. And now I'd like to read the mission statement for the City Council. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Clerk, will we read our certification?
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Okay, thank you. So, our presentations tonight, we have a few. And our first one is in honor of Irish American Heritage Month. And Michaela, Michaela, are you here? Okay. Michaela didn't join us yet. Hopefully, she's going to join us in a little bit. Actually, this month, there are two, is the celebration of two heritage, heritages. It's Irish American Month, and it's also Greek American Month. And for Greek American Month, all that we wanted to say is just, it's an honor to recognize our residents from Greek descent, and also just the value that Greece has been an ally of the United States for quite a while, and just our appreciation of that, and appreciation of our Greek residents here. And we will get back, we'll make sure not to miss the proclamation for Irish American Month, but we also have one last presentation, and this is by our new Assistant for Community Development, the Assistant Director, Richard Thompson. And Richard is going to talk with us about the summer internship program. So, Richard, it's all yours. Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Richard Thompson. I'm the Assistant Director for the Office of Community and Economic Development for the City of Long Branch.
Hey, Rick, could you just raise the mic a little bit?
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak about the summer youth internship program tonight. The internship program has been in development by the Office of Community and Economic Development for just over a month now, with the guidance in direction from the city's administration, as well as Mayor Pallone. We were able to open applications this past Monday, and have already received an overwhelming amount of support and questions regarding the program. The Long Branch Public School System has also been a big supporter of the development of the program by giving support and advice on the foundations of the program, as well as helping advertise it, with the dates being planned to have a table for applications during lunch period at Long Branch High School. The internship program aims to take in 10 to 15 students from Long Branch and place them with one of eight departments selected, which include the Police Department, Fire Department, the Department of Recreation, Department of Public Works, the Arts and Cultural Center, Community and Economic Development, Senior Center, as well as the Department of Special Events. Through a six-week paid internship funded by the Office of Community and Economic Development, interns will have the opportunity to gain practical experience that they can carry into the workforce, as well as give students a leg up for future jobs, and hopefully finding a future career path. Applications for the program are open from March 21st through April 29th, and can either be picked up at the Arts and Cultural Center located at 577 Broadway, or obtained, or obtain an application packet digitally from longbranch.org/syip. If a member of the council has any questions regarding the program, I would be more than happy to address them.
Thanks, Rich. So, this is basically high school kids or are it junior, middle school kids?
So, it's geared for 14 to 18 years old.
14 to 18 years old?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, Rick, it's open to any resident of Long Branch from any school?
Correct. 14 to 18 years old, enrolled in public or private school, or a GED program as well.
Okay.
That's great.
Very nice.
Good luck for that. And would you just say again the time commitment in terms of the daily commitment and how many weeks?
Yep, so it's a six-week internship, 15 to 20 hours a week.
Okay. I would just encourage everybody to really consider this program. I know I've done that program similar to this at other locations. It's just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for kids to get involved. So, it's great that we're doing this. Good.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, thank you. Okay, to continue with our agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 9th. Pardon me? Oh, Michaela is here?
Michaela's here.
Michaela, there you are. Why don't you come on up? Michaela, just give me one second to introduce you and say a little bit about you, because you are one very busy young lady. So, hold on. Michaela is a seventh grader at the Long Branch Middle School. In school, she likes to stay busy by being part of the soccer team, the basketball team, the track team, and the debate team, all while maintaining her grades and remaining, and being a part of the National Junior Honor Society. She also loves all genres of art. She plays multiple instruments, including the French horn, the trumpet, and the piano. She loves to act, and has been in a part of two children's plays at the County Basie Theater. In her free time, which I suspect you don't have very much of, in her free time, she loves to watch, draw, and read anime, and spend time playing board games with her family. So, delightful, I guess that you are one busy young lady. So, Michaela, thank you so much. If you would go ahead and read the resolution for Irish American Month.
Hold on, Anita, I actually have one for her.
Oh, okay.
So, she's not here on the phone. Yep, all yours.
Whereas from America's earliest day, Irish immigrants and their descendants have contributed leadership, wisdom, and vitality to America throughout nine signers of the Declaration of Independence and 22 presidents with Irish roots, as well as the incredible, indelible mark Irish Americans have made in the shaping of the great state and city of Long Branch through numerous governors, legislators, mayors, and public officials. And whereas, though out their long history, the Irish have been ardent in their passion for liberty, hearted of oppression, and renowned for their loyalty. And thus, the Irish have, from the beginning, been prominent in the defense of this nation with 20 of George Washington's generals and an esteemed quarter of his army being composed of Irish Americans. And whereas, Irish immigrants and their descendants have contributed to the building of this great society, not only by the laying of railroads and the building of physical bridges, but also by building bridges of the mind amongst all people throughout the founding of numerous schools, colleges, and universities, enhancing the quality of every phase of life. And whereas, Irish American women have a long and proud tradition of being visionaries and trailblazers, whether it be Ann Sullivan, the teacher of Helen Keller, crusading journalist Nellie Bly, or New York's own Colin, Owen Collins, the first woman to command a space shuttle. And whereas, Irish Americans have made an indelible impression upon every endeavor in art, music, literature, science, film, dance, theater, sports, education, law, finance, and politics with all the strength, resilience, humor, and hospitality of the Irish character. It is most fitting to set aside this month to highlight and honor the history and heritage of the Irish American, and to remember and pay tribute to contributions they have made to our city and our nation. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Long Branch that they hereby proclaim March 22nd as Irish American Heritage Month in the City of Long Branch.
Yay. Michaela.
Nice job.
Excellent job, Michaela.
Good job.
We're so proud of you. Thank you so much for doing that. So, moving on in our agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Upstaying.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, there are none. Ordinances for introduction, this is the first reading of ordinance 07-22, entitled "An Ordinance to Create a Tree Preservation Ordinance for the City of Long Branch." This is a summary of what the ordinance is all about. This ordinance establishes a tree preservation ordinance to promote the general welfare of the people of the city by protecting, regulating, planting, and cutting trees in such a way as to preserve the environment. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for April 13th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. Now to the public participation for resolutions and all general comments, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening. My name is Alice Kessler. I live--
Ms. Kessler, you want to, can you lower the mic a little bit? Thank you.
My name is Alice Kessler. I live at 74 Cedar Avenue. This is either the first or second month that the Long Branch Senior Center is now fully open to the public in over two and a half years. I went to the Senior Center this morning. The Senior Center offers four free exercise classes a month to seniors. I think it's recommended that all adults should exercise four to five times a week, but at the Senior Center, you can exercise there four times a month for free. The first thing that I noticed in this very popular class, wonderful teacher, is that the class was 100% white slash Caucasian, and I thought to myself, gee, the 55% Latino, African-American community are smarter than the Caucasians. They'll use their $6 to $9 a week exercise money for gas for their cars or increasing grocery bills. Then I thought to myself, the center has been closed for over two and a half years. That's two and a half years of senior budgeted money that was not used for seniors. Was that money given back to the city? I think probably not. I think that the Senior Center should show how it cares about its seniors. They should use that unspent budgeted money to offer seniors at least one year, for one year, free exercise. You know, if the seniors are in an art class or a craft class, materials are being used. We understand that, and we'll pay for the ceramics, we'll pay for the paint and supplies. But an exercise class is just one person standing or leading a class in front of a group. There are no materials involved. The Senior Center can't afford to pay for an instructor when there's no materials being involved. And don't let anyone tell you that seniors are not tech savvy. Our own, very much respected, Dr. Selly is as tech savvy as any young person I know. While I was waiting to get into class, several people asked staff at the Senior Center if they would go back to providing the class on Zoom as well as in-person. They had been allowing the seniors to do Zoom and in-person exercise. The staff member said, no, we don't do that anymore. The woman in front of me, another woman, said to the same staff member that she and her friends wanted to do the class on Zoom, and they would offer to pay for it, because she didn't want to wear her mask in class. Several seniors said it was easier for them to do the class at home and not drive to the Senior Center. Why shouldn't that still be provided? But going back to that two and a half years of unspent budgeted senior money, if it is there, that should be used to give us free exercise, four to five days a week. And please remember that if none of the 55% majority African-American Hispanic community is showing up to pay for exercise, then the community needs are not being met. Our town is going to be spending a lot of money on improving the Senior Center. Perhaps you should think about modernizing the operations of the Senior Center. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alice.
Ms. Kessler, before, let me just tell you, I don't know if you were at the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon, but I just wanted to let you know that on April 13th, which is Wednesday, and whatever it is, two or three weeks, we're going to have a presentation on, actually, there's two goals. One is obviously to talk to the seniors about the renovation and expansion that's going to take place at the Senior Center. And the other is the fact that, you know, we have been, the Senior Center has been closed for two years, and we wanted to just kind of talk to everybody about what they want to see and what they want to do. So, it might be a good opportunity for you to come there. There's a lunch and so forth on the 13th at noon.
Ms. Kessler, if I might just respond about the unspent funds. The way our municipal budget works, it's on a yearly basis. At the end of that year, the money that is left over or unspent reverts to the General Fund and becomes part of the city's overall treasury. It doesn't carry over as extra money to the following year. Every year's budget is independent of the prior year. So, the fact that those programs weren't being paid for previously doesn't mean that money magically appears in the next year's budget. It has to be re-appropriated. And also, if I can ask you one thing, in speaking to Pat about some of the programs, my understanding was that a lot of them, there is a request for contributions, but if a senior doesn't have the means to pay, they are given a pass on those. Is that true with the exercise? I'm not sure. Certainly, yeah, that's why I'm asking.
That's actually a bone of contention. That is a very, I, really is a sore point with me. Very clearly, it states in the senior calendar, there is a suggested donation of $3 per class. But let me tell you something, you show up to that Senior Center, you don't get in the room unless you pay that $3. And why should I be questioned or shamed into saying whether I can afford or not afford it? If I was a stranger coming to Long Branch, and I was just going to check out the Senior Center and go see how things are, suggested donation? Sure, I'm going to walk in that classroom, see if I like the class, maybe I'll come back and I'll pay that the next time or the time after. But no, it's more of a mandatory payment, or you're shamed, and I'm telling you, no one should question anyone. Oh, you can't afford it? We'll let you in for free. They shouldn't be shamed into that. They should not be questioned at all. If they're using the word suggested donation, then that's how it should be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly.
And certainly, that conversation can be continued offline, you know, one-on-one as needed. More people to speak?
My name is Joseph Lucia. Live down in 16 Woolley Avenue in Long Branch. Been there for 30 years. And I guess all the dispatcher knows me, because I call up every day about the traffic and how fast they go down that road. It's a 25 mile an hour road. Nobody goes 25. Probably me and a couple of other people. They fly down there every day. I got to call the police. I guess the police probably think it's a joke after a while, but it's not. They fly down there, and also you got people that are renting now across the street from me. They got six boys that are older, I guess, that are still living with their parents. They got six cars. So, when I have to go out, I have to pull my car in the middle of the road, then pull my car out, then bring my wife's car back in, then go. I mean, you got cars on each side, over here, and people flying down there. Sometimes you ain't going to see them. There's a little kid that lives next to me, he's a cute little kid, you know, something's going to happen here sooner or later, and these people don't care. I tell them to slow down like that, and they give me real nice gestures. You can know what they do. And it's just, you know, something should be done. It's a 25 mile an hour road, you know? These people shouldn't be going that fast down there. It's just like they have no respect for it at all, you know? That's what I say. And I say, you should put speed bumps on. If you go down over there in Eaton Town, they have little speed bumps, they're black like that by that place that sells the tools, all right? You can put them down, you can screw them up and get them in there if you're scared to hit them with a plow. I ran a cemetery for 47 years. We had the same thing. We put sticks on the side where we know where the thing was, we lifted our plow up, and then we put the plow down. The cars do the rest by smashing the snow down. It's only natural, you know? But something should be done. That's what I say.
Thank you. If we have your contact information--
Yeah, I just--
I'm suspecting that--
I've talked to Mr. Lucia on several occasions. We haven't talked in a while, and I just introduced him to Director Saldiva, who has been new, I think, since we last--
Yeah, nice man.
So, hopefully, he'll, he will reach out to you.
I hope something's done, you know, before something gets, you know, something gets bad. And it's all noted down. I've came here a couple times, you know? And anything, you know, it's, anything goes bad, it's going to be bad, you know? Because it, there's too many cars. It used to be, at one time, you couldn't park in the street, and then I think they had some kind of a rule, and I think the guy whose father was a policeman had a little bit of a rule there, and they took the signs down, then anybody could park there now. So, now there's cars all over the place. So, when you get out, you got to watch out when you get out of there. So, that's what, you know, something should be done. That's what I'm saying. Even if you put a sign, if you don't want to put the speed bumps that lights up, I see them, you have them over down here, you know, down where food fair is down there, you have them lit up. There's nothing. There's two signs, I think, and you can hardly see them that says 25 miles an hour, you know? And these people, they don't care. They just fly down there, especially the ones that are late, you know, about 20 after 7, 4 after 7, then they start flying down there to get their kids there, you know? So--
So, I think either the director or the mayor will follow up, but thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, I really wish they would, because I've been there 30 years, and I get up early, so I hear it, and it sounds like a New Jersey turnpike going through there, so.
Good.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lucia.
Thank you, sir. Hope I can talk to you soon.
Report.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Catherine Duckett, 228 Albert Place, Long Branch. And because I may not be able to be here on the 13th, I wanted to speak in support of the tree ordinance that was just introduced. I'm an entomologist by training, and I'm especially pleased to see the protections for and encouragement of native plants to support the ecosystem in Long Branch, and I laud your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine.
It's wonderful to hear from professionals in the different areas, so we very much appreciate your comments. Thank you. Good. Anybody else? All right.
Motion to close. Motion to close.
Pardon me?
Motion to close the public portion.
Yeah. Yeah. I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second. Anyone opposed? Okay. I'll now ask Madam Clerk if there are any changes to the list of resolutions.
Resolution 85-22 was added to the agenda. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Grant Agreement by the Long Branch Free Public Library with the New Jersey State Library.
Okay, thank you. With that, we can now take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly? Dr. Selly? Yes?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. And now to applications, I need a motion to appoint the following member of the Long Branch Fire Department, Jerome Barlow from the Elveron Company, and the status is honorary. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Dr. Vogt?
Yes. And now for miscellaneous business for the good of the order, and Councilman Dangler is going to start us off.
Good evening. Only thing that I have is welcome back. Please be safe, and it's just good for everybody to see everybody again with masks or without. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Councilman Dangler. Councilman Viera?
Good evening, and thanks for coming. I really appreciate, because this is what I enjoy, dealing with people, and a lot of speakers today. I want to thank them for that, and I want to congratulate Jerome for being appointed, and I'd like to see all the volunteer firemen back there. Thank you for all the support and all the hard work you do. Good night.
Thank you, Councilman Viera. Councilwoman Wittes?
Hi, good evening. First of all, it's really nice to see everyone here tonight. It's a great feeling, and thank you for taking the time to come out. I also wanted to mention Catherine Duckett got up and commented about the tree ordinance, and I want to thank her, she's part of the Environmental Commission. She heads it up now, and she was very instrumental in helping us move this ordinance forward, so I would like to thank her personally for all her efforts. And anyway, I hope everyone is safe, and I hope to see you all in two weeks, and thank you for coming again. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Councilwoman Wittes. Councilwoman Selly?
Good evening, everybody. I, first of all, I'd like to recognize the library director who's in the audience, Tanya Garcia. She-- We're very proud of our library. And I'm happy to be back, and I see some friendly faces and some not-so-friendly, but that's a politician's job, I guess. I would like to just say I've missed seeing everybody, I've missed coming to the City Hall, but those things happen. But now that we're back, and we'll take care of business. And with that, I'd like to stay safe, and God bless you all.
Good. Thank you, Councilwoman Selly. Mayor Pallone?
Thanks, Council President. Yeah, I'd also like to say, I'm just glad to be back, and thank you for being here tonight. I had a couple of announcements I'd like to make, as I usually do. So, we're having a barbecue, an old-fashioned barbecue at Jackson Woods on Saturday, April 9th, with a rain date on the 10th. That's from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We're having that because we received a significant grant to improve the trails, and some of the things are at Jackson Woods, and so we wanted to have a little ribbon coving and a barbecue for our residents, just to let them see Jackson Woods. and a barbecue for our residents, just to let them see Jackson Woods, which is really quite beautiful now. So that's, again, on April 9. We're going to have live country music, free barbecue food, and games for the kids and the whole family. It's a free event, again, to celebrate the new and improved Jackson Woods. Regarding the upcoming beach season, seasonal pool passes and beach passes are available. They can be purchased on our website or at the Bucky James Community Center in person. Please call our recreation department. We've had a new exhibit at the Art Center, which actually is ending on March 25. It's the lure of the beach at Long Branch with, highlights the golden age of Long Branch in the late 19th century. And it's a prelude to what's opening on April 4, which is a celebration of the 200th birthday of Ulysses S. Grant. And so in addition to a lot of artwork on the walls, we're going to have some artifacts from President Grant's Elbron Home, which have been in a lot of different places, and we're bringing them all together in the cultural center. So also on the 27th, there's a reception there between 6:00 and 8:00, where two historical societies, the library and the city, have gotten together to make this a really nice event and exhibit. We see a lot of our volunteer firemen here. I want to thank them for what they do at Christmas and in Easter, and this has become a tradition. And so the Easter Bunny will be riding through Long Branch on a fire truck also on April 9 at noon, with a rain date on the 10th. You know, listen for sirens and wave hello to the Easter Bunny. And I've gone with them several times. I want to thank them again, because a lot of people just come out. And there's a route that I guess is available on the website, or I'm not quite sure. But we'll be, they'll and we'll be talking about that for quite some while. There's a couple other things that are happening in relation to Easter. The Chamber of Commerce will be having, with the city, will having Easter egg hunt on April 10 at West End Park for ages 2 to 10. Again, that's been a tradition for several years. And then at the Art Center on the 13th and the 14th, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., it's free admission, and the Easter Bunny will be there as well. And all the children will be getting a chocolate gift, and as well as their photos taken with something that they can take home with them. So there's just a bunch of events. They're all on the website. You'll often call City Hall, and we can give you some more information on that. But again, thank you for being here this evening.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Like you said, a lot, a lot going on. So for my comments, first of all, I'd like to ask our business officer if he would just comment. We've been getting some questions from some of our restaurant owners as far as summer dining, outside dining, like we did last year. So Mr. Jackson, if you could just give us a little update on that.
Sure. So as you all know, through our two years of COVID, we had extended outdoor dining privileges for our restaurants. They were able to expand their premises and serve their customers outside. In conjunction with that, the state was generous in allowing us to extend licensed premises for those establishments that serve alcohol. So that's gone on for the last two years. Even though COVID, you know, hopefully, we've seen the worst of it, the state has seen fit to extend those privileges again until November of 2022. So this year, those same privileges will be extended by the city to all of our restaurants and our bars. Any of those premises, and this is really for, hopefully, folks out there listening, I don't know if we have any owners in the audience. If any of our permit holders from last year wish to continue, they don't have to reapply, as long as their premises has got to be situated as it was in the past. And I understand that the clerk's office, Lieutenant Shirley advised, you're going to be calling all of our previous permits holders. And as long as the same footprint is being used, no reapplication will be necessary. So the extension of the liquor license and/or the extension of the outdoor dining will be renewed without any paperwork. If anyone hasn't had it in the past and wants to apply for the first time, they'll have to apply through the city. Also, if there's an amendment to the pre-existing plan, they'll have to reapply so we can inspect. But again, people will be able to have their cocktails and dine outside for another year. So we just want to make that known to our restaurant and bar owners here in town. And that's all, Council President.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And I know that comes as good news to a lot of our restaurant owners. So that's wonderful. Let me, just a few other very quick things. I just want to bring to your attention one of the resolutions that we passed tonight, which is an application that is being filed to apply for a planning grant to see if we could have a citywide bike path, what that might be able to look like. It's a, it's a long process. It's thanks to our environmental committee, the Green Team, a few really key players on that. We had a, actually, also a bike committee that worked on this. So the application, we needed to pass the resolution tonight so that the application could be submitted. If we get selected, it'll be a planning grant. So again, that'll be, you know, a little bit of time to look at our current conditions and what might make for an optimal citywide bike path for us. So we're kind of excited about that. That was one of our resolutions. I just want to do a shout-out to St. Michael's Church and a reminder for all of us to, you know, remember our friends, our colleagues, humanity, all of us, you know, dealing with the Ukraine situation. I think I mentioned it last time, the campaign that they did for any sort of donations, be it monetary or the list of different, the medical supplies, clothing that they were collecting to actually send over to Ukraine. They had a report that they posted. It was wonderfully successful.